Ten seconds.
Lloyd Linder, Jason Barry, Jerry Rhodes, Chris Horton.
Here.
Mark Richardson.
Here.
Steve Edgerton.
Here.
Doug Haberman.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to appoint Mr. Doug Haberman as a full-voting representative and welcome him. He's just been appointed to the board. First item is approval of amendments in the June twenty first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Is there a motion? Motion to approve motion made by Mr. Barry. Stand by, Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. Standing. Committee reports. You have the summary of the Land Use Board reports. Are there any questions? Next, we'll go on to City Council report. Mr. Wood. I'm trying to be quick here this evening. If you've driven by the Somersworth Fire Station, that project, nine million dollar project, is close to being complete. If you drive by, you'll notice some landscaping, additional fire coat of asphalt, exterior improvements largely, interior, firefighters have moved into the recently completed section, so they're operating out of the full building now. Interior. If you have to stray from the podium to make your presentation, we do have a portal like you can use. If you come up again, state your name and your address or your affiliation with who you are representing. I do A, Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Russo Soccer Club is seeking site plan and conditional use permit approval for reconstruction of athletic fields to remove existing baseball field and construct two soccer fields on property located at twenty-three. This is man thirty-two, one-sixth of a second.
The applicant is proposing to reconstruct the existing athletic fields to remove the existing baseball field and construct two soccer fields within revisions to the existing gravel parking lot, dugouts and bleachers, and construction of a grass infiltration basin for stormwater. They are seeking a number of waivers, as seen indicated in your staff report. They also are seeking a conditional use permit. They did go to the Conservation Commission back in June, who provided a favorable recommendation with a number of conditions that the applicant has incorporated into their plan set.
Thank you. Is the application ready for acceptance?
Yes.
I'm saying a motion for accepting the application. So, motion made by Mr. Wood and seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Norway Plains to make their presentation.
Thank you. I'm Lori Badger of Norway Plains Associates, here representing Russo Soccer Club for their proposed conditional use permit and site plan applications for the property located at twenty-three Tate's Brook Road. The person was known as the midfield bench owned by Tri-City Community Church. It is within residential two, Wetland Conservation of the Way in the area of Wetlands buffer districts. The property is developed with recreational fields, including a baseball field, softball field, and soccer field. There are also two seducations on the site, jurisdiction of Wetlands and the project. The proposal is to remove the existing baseball field and recreate the open area for two soccer fields. The existing gravel park and parking lot will be built to create a separation between the parking area and the playing field. The dugouts, bleachers, and gravel around the baseball field will be removed during the construction of the new U twelve field. If the building require earthwork within Wetland Conservation of the Way and the area of Wetlands buffer, I'd like to note that almost all of the work that's within the wetland area is within the existing fields, which has previously been disturbed. There will not be any impact. The site. The project is presented at the J Conservation Campaign and it has received their support. The new way is proposed on the property for irrigation purposes only. The utility pools are proposed to bring power to the existing shed for the irrigation system. The pools will be installed with guidance from resources on their specific locations. The shallow infiltration basin has been designed to infiltrate eighteen weeks' snow water from the proposed incriminating. February leisure controls will be installed prior to the start of construction on the site. The request has been made that the existing landscaping, the site review regulations, landscaping of promise. Many tree removals proposed on the site and vegetation buffers currently exist and are to be altered. Several waivers have been requested from the site review regulations due to the minor site modifications being proposed on the property. An option of command permit has been filed with the mature DAS. Due to the area of disturbance being granted by one hundred thousand square feet, we've designed the site to meet the requirements of the mature DAS. The project will also require reconstruction general permit from the EPA that will be filed prior to the start of construction. At this time, I want to know any questions or concerns you may have about this project.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting has been concluded. We're going to ask for comments from the public.
Thank you.
I'd sort of like to open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments on this application? Any requests? Do you have any correspondence?
Yep. We received an email from Thomas and Kathleen from twenty-two Tate's Brook. I will absolutely butcher their last name, so I'm just going to say it's Thomas and Kathleen from twenty-two Tate's Brook. They sent an email to Director Mears, and they said, "This email is to say that we are not against the above plan, but we do have concerns with this leak about increased traffic. Tate's Brook is heavily traveled at present, so the games, championships, jamborees, et cetera, will increase the road traffic more." They said that this league of soccer teams should have some disciplined people to help traffic to into golf fields, help guard parking, especially help the flow of traffic leaving the fields. We have seen some near miss accidents over the nine years. We, with the City Planning Board, will lead to safe driving with good suggestions to the new soccer league using this venue.
Thank you. Same week, same day. With that, close for public hearing. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Rhodes. Not so much questions. I just wanted to give a couple of highlights from the conservation discussion that we had on this. The use is pretty low impact despite the fact that it is going to the buffer's early building soccer fields, not permanent structures. So that limits the overall impact on the surrounding buildings. The majority of our requests were around parking and making sure that we didn't have vehicles approaching onto wetland areas. We asked for a couple of changes on this with an earthen burn off to where it's the north and east of the world there, which I could see on the plans, placement of some boulders to block off access to a few areas which were places where we requested them. The only other item that we had was a spot being noted on the plan for dropping portable bathrooms on site, which I could see and wanted to note things that they put those pretty much as far away from the wetlands as they could and still get them on their property. Overall, the applicant was really responsive to our requests. Looks like they incorporated all of them on the plan and we were happy to recommend them.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Wood. Oh, I guess for a couple of extra comments. You know, you're just reconfiguring the existing field on this there now. Additionally, you have an permit, so I'm pretty confident about that, that will support the good efforts of reconfiguring the field, so. Maybe if you just talk to the, uh, the butters.
Um, the thing. Are we using this? The increase to parking as, I mean, to the traffic being out of the site because it's already been used in the fall time for soccer and by removing the baseball field, they're going to have a reduction because baseball and softball were played at the same exact time, or soccer and softball in the opposite place at the same time. I hope that answers the concern about traffic.
Mr. Wood, Mr. Richardson. Thank you. I did receive one email from, uh, to the, I guess, the rest of the property through the woods. I was kind of surprised to receive an email about this. I thought this project was sort of, if you will, a slam dunk. It's athletic fields being repurposed into athletic fields. Truth be told, although it pains me greatly to see a baseball field going away, I get it. I get it. The butters' concerns were over noise, and they specifically called out spectator noise, crowds cheering and that sort of thing, which in my mind, I thought, well, we already have that going on out there. So this is not a new configuration, if you will. And they also raised the issue about light pollution. They were under the impression that the fields would be lit. And I said, "At this time, it does not look from the plan sets that they would be lit." But I don't want to rule that out in the future, but I just want to reaffirm that there's no plans at the moment to light the fields.
So no plans at this time to add any lighting to the site?
I may ask for a condition of approval that if lighting is ever considered, then have to return to the planning board because I think it's a significant change that would require at least a conversation. And truth be told, I'm not against it. I think today's modern LED lighting is very directional and doesn't have light pollution concerns like field lighting of old, so I think it's fine. But I think just to be in good favor, it makes sense to bring that back here if that ever wanted to happen. I hear you about the traffic, the environment. Since the email, again, to the point that has been made, this has been a property that's been used by athletic fields for quite some time now with cars coming and going. But I am a planning board member, so at least be cognizant of the butler concerns. It might make sense in advance of the park entrance on Tate's Brook Road in either direction to have a sign right with the manual on the phone traffic control device that says "Park Entrance Ahead." I think that would be a reasonable condition if the applicant is willing to have those installed.
This is the applicant's. I'm Michael Bill, part of Russo Soccer Club. What I wanted to say was, we've been using this field for fifteen years. It actually had the heaviest use between two thousand eight to two thousand twelve. We had way more traffic than there is here now. These people said that they've been there for nine years, so they missed the heaviest use. In twenty-twenty-one, because we could not use the high school fields, we actually had all of our recreation here, all of our travel play there, so this isn't paying for you. They're trying to make a field that's still better. If you've got the building on the field, the ground cover is pretty poor. It's mostly debris rocks. So they're, they're trying to do this for less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Wow. That's how much they're paying for this. So are you not sure what you're asking for? Oh, a sign. Yeah. I heard the, I thought you owned some kind of traffic light. No, 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 a sign. I thought I was being visible. Thank you. Other than that, I have no concerns with this project. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Yes, thank you, Mr. Jerry. Mike, you're being gracious by saying you're part of Russo Soccer, and we all know that you traditionally are Russo Soccer, so. And it's good to see this coming forward, and thank you. Thank you very much. I think the suggestions that have been made are good ones. I, I did note that, I did notice that the current stands that are there are being removed. And as far as I can tell, there's no, no plan to replace them with anything else. I think those, those pictures didn't have the back on them, they didn't have any side railings. They were insurance and liability ready to happen. But I think again, if there's similar to what Dave was saying, maybe if there is a plan sometime to replace and all pictures, you know, maybe at least if we can be notified about that, that would be. I'm not sure that that's something we do have to come back here for, but give at least a notification. I feel like that would be good. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Barry.
I just want to say that conservation review is very thorough. If they get the double thumbs up, I'm going to support that as well. So happy to see your wife getting put into a lot of existing projects, so best of luck to you. I will believe in favor of you tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? The waiver will turn to a regional impact. And if the motion has to allow this as regional impact. Mr. Wood. I think the application does not have any regional impact. Mr. Wood. Second, Mr. Richardson. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. Next item is landscaping design standards. I'm saying we're, uh, motion for that. Mr. Rhodes.
I move with the request of Norway.
Sorry. I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Russo Soccer Club for determination that the existing landscaping meets the intent of a landscaping design standard's effort. Pushman by Mr. Rhodes. Second by Mr. Wood. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. Motion passes. Next, we'll call it into the waiver request. Can I have the image reviewed before you? I'd like to hear at least the first waiver of the applicant talking now on specifications for plan and documents be waived.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure which.
What's your question?
Which waiver it is.
So you're seeking a waiver for Section ten point two, specifications for plans and documents to be submitted. Oh, is that this traffic study? Is that correct?
There's a traffic study here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm good with that. Well said. Any other questions? Okay, waiver number one, specifications for plans and documents to be submitted. Say we have a motion for the waiver. Mr. Wood. Sure, I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Russo Soccer Club for a wafer from Section ten point two regarding a traffic study be approved. Pushman by Mr. Wood and seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. Mr. Wood. Yeah, I always think it's important if we're going to waive our requirements, just to give a little bit of background as to why I would support that. As has been articulated by both their Norway Plains representative and Mr. Hill, these fields have been there for a long, long time. The traffic impacts are known. It's a measurable quantity that comes and goes. Doesn't appear to be excessive by any stretch, so I am fine with the waiver request. Further discussion. Those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. waiver passes. Waiver number two, Section twelve point four point A point B, Exhibit A, residential development's required parking spaces to a one sixty-eight parking spaces, moving seventeen is required, does any have motion? Mr. Wood. I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Russo Soccer Club for waiver from Section twelve forty-five, Exhibit A, at Site Plan Review Regulations be approved. Pushman by Mr. Wood. Second by Mr. Barry. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. waiver is granted. Waiver number three, Section twelve point four point B, point V I. Mechanic circulation and parking, parking lot design standards, all parking must run within hours shall be paved. Say we have the motion for waiver. I'm excited, Mr. Wood. Yes, I move with the request for this waiver from Section twelve point four point B, point six, the site plan regulations be approved. Pushman by Mr. Wood. Second by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. Mr. Wood. Yeah, thank you. It's a gravel parking lot right now. I have taken note, so I'm recently here, that a bit of a paved apron was provided off of Tate's Brook Road, which I very much appreciate that being taken care of. I wouldn't have made that a condition here, if not just to preserve the road edge, but that's been done, so I'm good. Any further discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. waiver is granted. Waiver number four, Section twelve point four point D, point seven, mechanical circulation, parking, traffic impact, electric vehicle, vehicle EV charging stations. Is there a motion for waiver from the site? Mr. Rhodes. I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Russo Soccer Club for waiver from twelve dot four dot D dot seven, the site plan review, while regulations requirement to install a automobile charging stations be approved. Pushman by Mr. Rhodes. Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Discussion. Mr. Wood. Congratulations. I don't know if it's a prize, but I believe this is the first waiver from this requirement as it's a relatively new requirement, so there you go. Any further discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. waiver is granted. Waiver number five, from Section twelve point nineteen, third party review, third party review of the drainage report. Does anybody have a motion for the waiver? Mr. Wood. I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Russo Soccer for waiver from Section twelve point one nine of the site plan regulations, requires to have a drainage report, third party review be approved. Pushman by Mr. Rhodes. Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. waiver is granted. Uh, for the, uh, conditional use permit, Director, excuse me. What did you plan across? And, uh, review conditions are.
Yep. So the Conservation Commission provided the following conditions of approval. There shall be a barrier along the west side of the parking lot to act as a barrier to protect the wetlands, such as rocks. A birthing grass berm installed along the east side of the driveway to protect the wetlands. If invasive predators are found on site, all fields shall remain on site. There shall be no further disturbance to the tree line under growth other than what is shown on the plan. Final plan shall bear the stamp of a wetland scientist. The applicant shall provide the location of the poor bodies. They shall be located outside of the wetland buffer.
That's good. Thank you. Any technical motion? Mr. Rhodes. I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates to cooperate on behalf of Russo Soccer Club for conditional use permit for eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet impacted the repairing in Wetland buffer as a part of a recreational field development be approved for the conditions. I don't know why about you. Pushman by Mr. Rhodes. Seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Pose. Motion passes. Motion passes. Any further motion for C U P?
Do you have any review conditions for something?
Yes, please. Yeah, yeah, let's see.
Yep, you have on the C U P. So, I can... Yes. Like, can I even, like, give you the conditions for the site plan? Um, so, for plan revisions, we'd like to see, um, have been... Please note all waivers and conditions on the plan. Conditions to be met prior to final approval. Um, the plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer, licensed land surveyor, and wetland scientist. General estate permits, um, shall be submitted. Now, this includes, but not limited to, the New Hampshire D E S alteration terrain. Conditions applicable during and after construction. Uh, construction costs listed for the project shall be submitted. Um, pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of work. An S P R account and amount, uh, set by the city's contract engineer. However, able to develop and services will be established for site construction inspections prior to any site work. A performance surety and the amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but not less than twenty-five percent of cost of site construction determined by engineers estimate of construction value. Will be established for onsite erosion control, site restoration prior to any site work, and offsite improvements. Um, erosion controls shall be properly installed prior to start of any construction. Um, this is a new commission here. Um, all applicants requiring a stormwater management and erosion control plan shall submit relevant prudent accounting information to the Director of Planning and Community Improvement as required by the Public Works Director. Relevant prudent tracking information shall be submitted prior to holding the pre-construction meeting. Post-construction prudent information must be entered at the time of asphalt's absolution. Applicants shall add the street address number to the site in such a manner to be plainly visible from the street, which accounts the main entrance of the property. So, um, for all projects approved under a condition of use permit, signs shall be placed at the end of the vegetated buffer. Those signs shall be provided by the city at the cost of the applicant. If water on, is, if water on site is utilized for anything other than irrigation, the property will be required to connect to city water as per the water use ordinance, in city sewer as applicable. Um, conditions applicable during and after construction. Uh, there shall be new signage added, um, indicating the park entrance installed as per M U T.
Yeah, well, anyone who has that employed, park entrance head shine shall be installed for both approaches to the park, to the satisfaction of the city's Public Works Department.
Okay. Both approaches have the cost from the applicant? Thank you. Um, there shall be no wetland degradation during construction. Uh, completed stormwater inspection maintenance logs submitted annually, um, honor before July first. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained. Any designated vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner. I, based off your discussion, I had, there was a condition that any outdoor lighting including security lights shall be downed and shielded, so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties. And there was discussion that if they install, this just before field lighting that you have been to progress? Okay. So, we'll keep that down and shielded, but include a condition that says if the applicant proposes to install any field lighting, they shall come back to the board for review of the lighting plan. And then this project will require asphalt, and that is all the conditions here.
There's a point of order, it says they see a precaution, but this is actually a site plan motion.
Just to confuse you, yes. It is a site plan motion.
Anybody have a motion? Mr. Berry?
I move with the request of Norway Plains Associates on behalf of Rosa Soccer Club for the site plan approval, for reconstruction of athletic fields, to remove an existing ball field and construct two soccer fields be approved with the conditions as defined by this process.
Wish may be Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Woods, discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand? Post. Motion passes, site plan is approved. Thank you. I can be on the new business. Joe Fosson, twelve month policy, seeking a waiver of subdivision regulation requirement of chapter twenty-two, section number seven, reduction in bond requirement for street acceptance for property located at villages at Sunnydale Drive and residential single family on one district, assistance map twenty block five, site number zero eight twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. At this point, we're standing, did you want to refuse?
Yes, sir.
I need a refusal for, I don't know, the four B. I have a cross in here, I need to add, on the side.
Um, so, the Sunnydale subdivision is in the process of working towards petitioning the city for street acceptance. As part of this process, the subdivision regulations require the applicant to provide the following for street acceptance. P acceptance, the acceptance of the maintenance bond or other security as outlined in section O may be a precondition to acceptance of the street by the city council. L improvement guarantees, a surety bond or other form of security to cover maintenance of roads and other improvements for a period of two years from the date of completion in an amount not less than twenty-five percent of said cost of improvements. If repair or unusual maintenance is necessary, or if any, or if additional improvements are required, then such costs as are deemed necessary by the city engineer shall be drawn against the said surety. The applicant has submitted a waiver request from the requirement to provide twenty-five percent of the cost of improvements for the surety bond to be held two years. They have submitted a proposal to maintain the existing two hundred and two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollar bond that remained in place. This way, the bond would need to be updated to reflect the appropriate things to cover, so it would not necessarily be a performance bond. It would be, need to be either updated or replaced to be the, um, appropriate maintenance bond for this purpose. But at this point, I believe the project is able to be discussed by the board.
Thank you. Any further motion for application acceptance? Mr. Warden? I've got the application of Joe Fosson, of twelve month L O C, being accepted as complete. Wish may be Mr. Warden? Second by Mr. Richardson, discussion. All those in favor raise your right hand? Post. I'd like to invite Mr. Fosson to make his presentation.
Um, everybody, Mr. Hill. This was a five phase project, every six plus minis, a process. And, uh, the process, uh, two of the phases were sitting there, I mean, the only ones, I don't know. Apparently, there's a... Uh, boy, look, it just carried over to the next phase. Since they, uh, got the superior information, they reached a true point in figure of, uh, annuals to then approved in approximately three point nine million dollars, which results in a, uh, a prior twenty-five percent, uh, nine hundred and sixty or seventy thousand dollars before it was born. Um, as I got to the last phase, I had asked, uh, the difficulty, uh, I was working with Mike, if I could pave the prior phases, because I always tried to get to the top coat, because there's a whole period of three years on the board. I was asked not to do that, because they were concerned about traffic for the last phase that was off in a loop. And I agreed to, uh, to do that because of the logical sense of less traffic better. However, I wasn't thinking at the time that ahead of going forward, maybe twenty-five percent of the replacement is on the last loop, which will then perform an amount of the estimate I had proposed in two thousand two. One of the things they really asked me to do is knowing the regulations as, uh, they got to any, except real, is to, uh, do a key, uh, explore of the drainage of water, the sewer pipes, throughout the whole project, which was twenty-one thousand dollars. It wasn't required, it's not the regulation, it makes sense, I did it. And they did find in this section on Sunnydale, right around here, the issue. So, they came and they fixed it. So, so, I mean, right now, that is excessive, uh, for the reasons that I've stated. The planning department, uh, they let the sewer details, they kept, uh, between two percent, ten percent. For the reasons, uh, I'm asking, because I'm wanting to ask if it could be reduced as proposed. Because any underground is fine. Maybe it happens everywhere, we have to be earthquake, for the ninety thousand dollars worth of damage. It's more than a billion, because it could be damaged. And the children, uh, that is...
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, public, can I ask if you're a bit, just probably, I'm sorry.
Hey, and now, um, this was received on July nineteenth by the city's, uh, government, this came back from the US, um, from Mark Gallagher, hopefully seven years ago. Mark Gallagher indicates, we are still, we are still experiencing extreme poverty in rural property, forty-seven in the circle center. Twelve thousand dollars, city has never contacted us. They are tempted to immediately vulnerable from properties above us on the new circle. Please see most recent picture, pictures attached. Twelve thousand dollars, should hopefully release from April until any call. Drainage issues of the villages of Sunnydale have been completely dissolved. Thank you for your attention on this matter, please, from me, and us. And the two thousand dollars that were submitted, the latest, uh, like, in the past, uh, years. I think we can come to this, right? Now, there's one, uh...
Any further? Yes. Any questions? I don't think there are, so, thanks. First of all, Mr. Fosson, uh, thank you for your articulation of the timing of this project. I think as well, uh, this project has spanned a number of years. Uh, and I am aware that, uh, the city, uh, that unless it was completed by Director Babinski, it desired to wait on the final paving until the project was completed without any traffic, traffic that carries the layers, material, lumber, anything driving over your road. Because of the, the last phase was off of the main, uh, side of the track. So, the articulation that we're designing, I think we have the right project because of what was chosen. From acceptance of the city rule from the city house perspective, we had asked that they made some sure, the city engineer, or the city's third party engineer, that the project was built to specifications, so the city house project, the city rule, has been built to specification. And the camera work that was done should we assist the engineers in determining that it was built to specification. So, that is not required, but makes sense, right? So, that was that. So, the developers correct that, and this is getting out for a price of, say, for the last, uh, week, which is what they have on four, which is a far smaller. And as he says, largely for payment and curbing, and not if it fails because of the way it was constructed, a lot of it fails we accept as the city's strength, the city, wow. It's certain damages, and that's the reality of it, I would have a failure from a destruction perspective. Thank you for the city house perspective, we've had several new work here, the city of that work is exceptional. Uh, if you're going to choose a local, uh, though, we're at the top of this. Any of the workers that own this, uh, I have very little confidence in areas, exceptional, so... Well, I guess, I, I think this story is a very interesting, uh, one, and that's why it's better. The water plant is, it's hard to really see from the pictures, but it appears to be near private property, not in the city street. That's a similar matter, same area as I can tell. So I hear the app with his concern, uh, about the developer. Sure, that's relevant to this conversation. Please take the advice, Mr. Richardson. Yes, thank you. I was, I was actually saying this to everybody else who asked for this thing is. I think it's a fair, there's some, uh, uh.
Forty-seven New Circle Gallagher.
That's all I'm asking to deal with tonight, so. Any other questions? Sheriff Mr. Huang, we have a request of Joe Folling of twelve town boroughs. For the waiver, section seventy-two to, until December seventh, seventy-two, requirement for adoption. At the twenty-five percent requirement for street acceptance, we agree to establish protocol for following. Take care of that, this specific amount, that's discussed there. That's going to be so. Second, so that is so, it's much bigger than that, I mean, there are a lot of other factors. So this, uh, the right of purchase, six percent of the third party name, the opposite side is two hundred thousand. Um, we need to convert this to twenty-two thousand, or three, seven, four. Seven, eight, four, two, thirty-four thousand. It's a year of interest. All right, yeah, let's go. So, uh, I can explain it, I'll just say it again. I think site plan project is a quality component, so thank you for that. I think it applies to community. Uh, that, this part of the, uh, that's, 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 that was how it kind of flies. Uh, there was a lot of apprehension in the area of the city, uh, concerning traffic. You have some skills, listening to the opening. I think by large, you know, that is the problem, the quality, uh, destination, they will have their self, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Well, you go ahead, I'm ready. Most, most necessary. Just trying to dedicate five minutes.
Hi, how are you doing?
How are you?
Good. Got a quick question.
So, um, it may, it may, um, move.
This one's one of them.
It was.
Yeah, so.
So that's what they. No, thank you. Thank you. Um, whenever you're ready.
Item C Winchester Arms LLC is seeking a lot line adjustment between two properties located along Route one oh eight. Commercial Drive and the Commercial Industrial CI District. Assesses map forty-one lot nine, map number sixty-four lot one, sub number zero-two twenty-two-three. Plana Crossley, you have anything to add?
Um, the proposed lot line adjustment adjusts the property boundaries to be in line with the municipal boundary between Summersworth and Dover. The overall impact of this lot line adjustment will not be seen in Summersworth's side of the property boundaries. Um, as you can see on the attached, uh, maps we provided in your packet, along with the lot line adjustment. There's a, um, in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, the subject properties went through a lot line adjustment. And as part of that, there was a sliver of land for the Summersworth parcels that remained in Dover. This application will clean up that lot line by transferring the remaining land in Dover to the properties owned by Winchester Arms. And bringing the new property boundaries to the municipal boundary. So you can see this previous subdivision plan, there's a little highlighted orange area. That area is going to remain in Dover. And basically the Summersworth properties will look the same as they do now.
Thank you. This time I'll ask Mr. Bruton to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of board. My name is FX Bruton, I'm with Bruton and Barrowby in Dover. Happy to be back here, I haven't seen you in a long time. Um, this is fairly straightforward, I think. Uh, with me tonight is Gary Campbell, and he's representative of Winchester Arms. Uh, Kevin McInney is here as well, uh, surveyor, uh, from Dover, and, uh, he helped us with the plans that you see here. Um, so just a little bit of background, um, as Dana mentioned. This was originally, uh, a lot line adjustment that, uh, was approved by this board and Dover because it straddled the line. Um, and what happened was, uh, basically my client Winchester Arms was not part of that, uh, lot line adjustment. It was just in a butter. And the Garabedian lot, which, uh, most people would know is that large lot that's still unused. Uh, and, uh, a portion of the lot that's owned by the city of Dover, there was a lot line adjustment. And on that plan, it was referred to as parcel B. And, uh, what they used at the time was a, um, uh, an older plan that depicted what was supposed to be the existing lot line. Um, then there was some clarity with respect to the town lines. And long story short, um, the Garabedian conveyed parcel B to the city of Dover. Uh, and then when my client, looking at, uh, just internal housekeeping in terms of where his land was and what was depicting it. Uh, we came across the, uh, lot line adjustment and noticed that that sliver that you see that actually Dana thankfully carved out. Cause it's a little bit difficult here on the plan that is actually the plan itself. And I can show you, show it to you very quickly. But in any event, that sliver, uh, is what was, in a sense, uh, uh, referenced. But, uh, was not referencing the actual town line. And so the city of Dover and the Garabedian Trust, uh, and Winchester Arms are coming now to kind of, s- in a sense, set the record straight. But define where that property line should be. Because that land was conveyed by the Garabedians to the city of Dover, the city of Dover, who was a co-applicant right in front of us. Um, has agreed to take that little sliver that was conveyed to them and convey it back to Winchester Arms, just so that the title is fine. Doesn't really relate to you guys. Uh, but in any event, all of that land was, when it came before you, that actual soil, if you will, was in Dover. Uh, and it will remain in Dover and nothing's changed about, uh, the city property line. Uh, other than we now have clarity of where it is. Uh, so this is all in an attempt to just kind of, uh, recognize that line and make that minor adjustment. And all parties are willing to do it and, um, happy to do it. So, uh, that's the simplicity of it. The reason this plan looks a little bit different than what Dana has provided to you. And what I mean by that is the Winchester Arms parcel looks like it's one lot. But if you look closely, uh, it was described as lots. Eighteen through eighteen E. And what we have depicted is that that one lot was, is really, I don't know, six or seven lots. So when you see your plan in front of you now, um, that's eighteen through eighteen E. It's just on that plan, it wasn't defined. And we wanted it to be defined because we have to, um, reference each of those little chunks of that triangle, just for real estate purposes. Um, so that's the plan you have in front of you, but the one Dana gave you is actually the best in terms of the overall concept of what we're doing. So I appreciate your patience and listening to all that. If you have any questions of us, we're happy to answer them. And again, keep in mind, the city of Dover is actually one of your applicants tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one little housekeeping item, uh, uh, entertain a motion for application acceptance. Mr. Rhodes? Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Witham. Discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Open the public hearing, anybody from the public here to comment on this item? Plana Crossley, any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Seeing none, close the public hearing. Questions from the board? Mr. Witham?
Good to have you back, Mr. Bruton, although this is relatively boring, so, uh, but needed, I understand.
Important. Stay forward.
Any other questions? Entain a motion for regional impact. Mr. Rhodes?
At the, uh, risk of absurdity, I move that the lot line adjustment application of Winchester Arms LLC for a lot line adjustment does not have potential for regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Berry, discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Uh, direct, uh, Plana Crossley, care to review conditions?
Um, no plan revisions proposed, um, conditions that mean, that must be met prior to final approval. Um, final plan shall bear stamp and signature of the engineer and licensed land surveyor. Um, we would also request a PDF copy of the final recorded plans, um, to be emailed, shared with us via email. Um, for tax map update purposes, though this will have no impact of our tax maps. Um, and then monumentation, um, granite bounds at any streets, which this does not have. But at property corners, which do not a bu- public right of way, bounds as approved by the board shall be installed. And a surveyor is to submit a signed letter to the planning department stating that the new lot corner monuments have been set prior to the plans being recorded. And that is all.
Thank you. Entain a motion, Mr. Witham?
Yeah, I'd move that the request of Winchester Arms LLC for the lot line adjustment between properties located along Route one oh eight and Commercial Drive be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Horton, discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes.
Thank you kindly. Have a good night.
You're welcome, thank you. Item D, under new business, Brittany Lee, on behalf of Summersworth Rail Station is seeking a site plan amendment for waiver of parking space requirements for a property located at four hundred High Street. In residential commercial RC District, assesses map thirty-seven lot four, site number eleven, twenty-two-three. Plana Crossley, care to?
Yep, um, so four hundred High Street was developed in two thousand and five, um, for an eight thousand four hundred commercial retail building, providing, um, thirty-eight parking spaces. Um, we included the site plan sheet for that, um, in your packet. And the break, that includes the breakdown of how parking was calculated. Um, the site was developed with five commercial spaces and the following are existing tenants, along with the parking requirements for the use as per the site plan review regulations. Dunkin' Donuts, um, weigh twenty-one thousand, yep, twenty-one hundred square foot, um, with drive-through requires twenty-one spaces. Edward Jones Investments, one thousand, um, and fifty square foot space requires four point two spaces. Miracle Air, a one thousand fifty square foot, um, space requires again four point two spaces. And the restaurant, a two thousand one hundred square foot, forty chairs, three employees, per the CO of the last record that we have, requires fifteen point three three spaces. So the applicant is proposing to add a retail use in the existing fifth vacant space, um, which is one thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet unit. And require nine point seven five parking spaces, based off of the square footage. This requires, um, with the coast bus stop reduction, a total space of forty-nine point zero three spaces required for the site. The applicant is seeking a waiver from section twelve point four point V, exhibit A, to provide less than the required number of spaces for the existing uses. They're proposing to keep the existing thirty-eight parking spaces to support their existing businesses and the new business in their vacant space. Um, please note vehicular circulation and parking does note that applicants are encouraged to utilize less than the required parking spaces shown in exhibit A. As long as adequate information is submitted that supports less parking for the proposed development. Um, at this time, the application is full for the board to take forward, to discuss.
Entain motion for application acceptance, Mr. Witham?
Move for acceptance.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Berry, discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Application is accepted. This time I'd like to invite, uh, Brittany Lee, representatives to make their presentation.
I am not Brittany, uh, Lee Joseph Pelich, uh, for Summersworth Rail Station tonight. Um, thank you so much, um, for your consideration. So the, the proposed use, uh, would be called, um, it's a DBA, it's the Beer and Wine Station. It's a specialty beer store with over five hundred types of beer. It's a special permit, um, in New Hampshire that you get from the state. Relatively rare, um, those type of stores. Uh, there'll be wine as well with a broad, uh, selection and a big humidor, um, custom built in North Carolina and shipped up. Um, so it's, it's hopefully going to be a high-end, um, use. Um, recently, um, there was a change of tenant, so I think lots of you probably knew Old Rail Pizza. Old Rail Pizza is, uh, not in business, uh, any longer, and it switched. And right now we're just working on a very high-end Italian restaurant, very small, um, and, um, limited, uh, seats. And, uh, in essence, the bar was a lot for that space, great place, but, uh, probably not adequate parking for, for how many, um, people would visit there. So that is no longer there. We think this is a great balance. We'll only need, generally speaking, one or two employees. So we literally only need one or two spots for this use with a bigger, a, a bigger store. And, um, I think from my understanding from the, um, gentleman who's going to lease it is no more than three. So perhaps during Christmas season or other holidays, they may have a third person on staff. But generally it's a, a super quick turnaround. People come in, generally less than five minutes for, for a, a trip. They pick out their specialty beer and, and they move on. So there's nothing served on site, there's no, anything like that. Simply just purchase, uh, the specialty item and, and, um, move on. So, so far in sixteen plus years, you know, we haven't found this good of a use, to be quite honest, from a parking perspective. Um, and struggled for sixteen years to fill that one spot. It's been vacant for sixteen years. And in essence, long story, long-term lease with that restaurant became a bar. Uh, the bar use was just not appropriate for, you know, what a tenant saw as, you know, their parking needs. So the second that we, um, didn't re-sign their lease, uh, we got lots of activity and we had this person come forward right away. They're from New York, I believe, uh, but they have stores in Maine and New Hampshire and, and New York and perhaps even New Jersey. Um, and they found out that we're going to do this really high-end Italian concept. And they thought it would be a perfect pairing, uh, next door with a small quaint Italian restaurant. Which by the way, uh, generally I think is going to open around five. I think that's a really important point because we all know Dunkin's is super busy early in the morning. It goes through almost no traffic at all around ten, ten-thirty, eleven, picks up a bit for lunch. By three o'clock, that parking lot is generally empty in that area. Edward Jones leaves around four, four-thirty, Miracle Air same. So the parking lot is really great at night, um, and this kind of balances those uses out, so we hope that we can get your support.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing, any comments from visitors? Plana Crossley, any correspondence?
No written submitted correspondence.
Seeing none, close the public hearing. Questions from the board, Mr. Witham, then Mr. Berry.
Thank you. I do think this is a reasonable request. I think the applicant did a very good job at articulating sort of the types of tenants there. Was not aware of all the details with Old Rail and now this new, uh, restaurant, so thank you for that. Um, and when I look at Dunkin' Donuts, that's a morning and maybe a bit of a lunch business, but it tapers off pretty quick, right? So when we talk in our site plan regulations about consideration of fewer parking spaces. This is exactly what was intended, this sort of shared spaces, right? So I, I think this works in this particular, uh, situation. So I'm in support of it. However, a couple of concerns with, with the site that I think are relevant to the parking that I, I would just like to, to flag here. One, uh, the parking lot lighting, uh, does not seem operable at the moment, so it needs to be repaired. So that would be a condition that I'd, I'd like to see. If we're going to have a vibrant business at night, we need to make sure that that parking lot is well lit. In addition. In addition, there's some exterior lights for the sign at the corner of Stackpole Road that have fallen into disrepair. One of them points out in the traffic. So I'd like to tie that in as needing repair as well. And thirdly, I think the parking lot striping could use a refresh, and I'd like to add that. And if we're going to be sharing spots, we need to make sure that they're well delineated. So those would be my three requests of the applicant, which I think are just good to do anyways.
Absolutely. So with regard to all of the above, so the parking lot in the building are overlet relative to the original plan. So we have a lot, we did a lot of wall packs around the building, obviously because of the drive-through was the big safety concern. The front lights, we've had a lot of problems with. They get hit regularly, and they are on order right now, so we've ordered the three new lamps for the big custom poles, so that shouldn't be a problem. Not sure about the one, the sign in the front. I was unaware that there was a problem. I think we'll eliminate the light because it gets hit.
It's probably getting, being hit by a snowplow would be my guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we've repaired it in previous years, but it also, I think pedestrians sometimes will break it perhaps or something. But anyway, we have no problem with that condition at all, and we planned on striping the parking lot anyway.
Mr. Berry.
Yeah. First things first, very happy about the clients that are coming into your building. And I know my wife and I were very excited about trying out the new restaurant, and I'm overjoyed to hear about your beer and wine client coming in as well. Now, as far as the, you know, you stole my thunder in regards to the mixed use and how traffic comes in. I was going to say the same thing. You know, Dunkin' Donuts, in the morning, mid-morning, little around lunch is going to be busy. But keep in mind, the majority of that traffic also goes through the back of the building, through the drive-through. But as the day progresses, you're going to start seeing your cars move towards the other side of the building, so that's really great. But even in my experience driving around there, I don't recall the parking lot ever being truly full, ever. Maybe one time, and as long as I've been here in 10 years, so I have no problem supporting the request that you have. The one other thing that I would also mention, in addition to Counselor Witham, is the entrance coming in from the Walmart side. I call it the, you know, it's a little bit of a tank, a tank hunter pothole on the entrance, if that could also be addressed as well.
We'd love to, but it's the city's. So we've been told not to touch it. It's happened for years and years. Unfortunately, there's a hydrant right there. Perhaps the depth of the water is very close to the four feet or so, and you'll always get frost heaves there. So generally, the city will come around this time, and they'll fill that in. I agree, we did fix it ourselves lots of times. We're told that's the road, don't touch our road. I think it was DPW who came down and talked.
I didn't see that. Okay, so.
It's an easy fix. It's just a big, big old pothole, right?
No doubt about it.
As you come in.
Because I've almost, I'm almost fallen victim to that a couple of times.
So noted.
Yeah, so, yeah, and, okay, I can't, I can't make that a condition of approval, but certainly I'm going to aim towards the city, guys, fix it, please. It's bad. But certainly, all of the recommendations that Counselor Witham put forward, I'd like to see also put into the approval conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Horton.
Thank you. So my comments are pretty similar to what have been said already. I think we, we know that Dunkin' Donuts tapers off pretty quick, so I think there's mixed use in parking there. But really, my heartburn is with the entrance on High Street. Specifically, the island right there. It's, it's an odd shape. It doesn't fit there. It just doesn't, it makes for getting in and out of that main entrance pretty tough, so I'd be, I'd be in favor of demo it, patch it, paint it, whatever you got to do. Have a painted island there, or delineation, or anything to that effect, so.
So that was part of the original condition when we got the approval in 2005. We tried not to build it. We didn't. And the city demanded that we build it. They want the traffic to come really, really slow as they pull it off of High Street. I couldn't agree with you more. I've seen more cars rip their exhausts off going over it. We painted it yellow. We had a sign in it. They run the sign over. It's generally a problem. But I think from a planning and an engineering perspective, that's something that the city absolutely wanted. I'll do whatever, whatever the city wants, but they made us put it back in.
I'd be in favor in adding that as a condition of approval as well, for the demo of that granite Caribbean island, and just pave over it, and if necessary, delineate with striping when the paving, when the parking lot is really striped.
That's great. That's excellent.
I guess one of my questions, wasn't that part of the original site plan approval? So I don't know whether you can make that a condition to change it.
Got to whack at the pinata here tonight, I guess.
So I'm curious, would, could this be an opportunity for the city to look at the pothole and go into the zone that he's not allowed to touch? Would the city be amenable to that? That's just a general question. Probably ain't towards DPW, I suppose.
Mr. Richardson, been waiting.
Yeah, on the same thing. It's kind, it's kind of a narrow entrance, but I do think that the island delineates the right-hand turn coming in from those who are turning right to go out, where without that little island, I, I can see some conflict there between cars going out and cars coming in. It's also been part of, that island has also been part of the degradation caused by all the other problems there, too, because sometimes that's been crumbled and whatever else, and it, it's a problem. And I, I wondered how to fix that, but I, but I also think it prevents accidents from happening, going out and coming in. So I'm, I'm kind of mixed on that whole thing there, but maybe it is something worthwhile for the city to review at some point, but I don't think it's something that you need to be responsible for. The city made you do it, so I think it's something on our end, so.
Twice. We did it, we did do it twice.
Really?
Yeah.
Mr. Witham, then Mr. Horton.
I think I generally favor removal of the island. So the city made me do it. The city made him do it because it was a condition of approval. So it's not like it was just this out of a whim. So conditions of approval are put in place by this board. I would gather that conditions of approval can be modified by this board when we have an opportunity like tonight. So it's an ideal opportunity to have the discussion. A condition of approval would be removal of the traffic island. If I recall correctly, and it was way back in my early years as a planning board member, the reason for that traffic island, there was a fair amount of concern about people leaving the High Street entrance and turning left and going towards Dover. The intent of the island was to, and it has that funny shape, was to funnel people right to head towards downtown. Observation is a good indicator of behavior. So if you were to park a lawn chair on the front lawn there and watch cars leave the establishment, yes, some turn right. Many turn left despite what the traffic island is suggestive of. They'll drive over it, they'll drive around it. So its intended purpose isn't meeting the mark. Let's just say that, right? People don't want to go out on the Stackpole Road and get in the light queue. This seems quicker for them, so they choose to do that. The big pothole by that fire hydrant when you turn in, I'll suggest that that's exacerbated by the fact that it's a very narrow entrance. It's a narrow throat. So when you have a somewhat larger vehicle, a big SUV, a pickup truck, that sort of thing, your tires are going to be over the edge of hot top, and it just beats on that edge. So removal of the traffic island might help that issue a bit. I, I don't think the traffic island meets its intended purpose. It's a maintenance nightmare. I think it could delineate in and out with appropriate striping. I kind of like the idea of its removal, because I think it, it doesn't work there, is my observation.
Mr. Horton, Mr. Rhodes.
Just, yeah, I agree completely. I was just going to add, too, I think the island there causes more problems than it prevents, and that's why I'd like to see that removed.
Mr. Rhodes.
Just to add my voice into the debate around the island and the property in general, the parking lot sightlines and turns in this property are very tight, and the worst spot is that island. If you drive a vehicle that's a little bit higher up off the ground, or one with relatively poor sightlines, and I drive both with a Toyota FJ, you just avoid that entrance entirely because you're going to hit the curb, you can't see it, you're going to hit that pothole, which, if you're driving something that's built for off-road conditions, and it shakes your spine every time you go over it, it's an indication it's very bad. I think it is exacerbated by that island. I'd be in favor of getting rid of that island entirely. I stick to the Stackpole entrance on this property every time I go in or out, specifically for that reason. It's not modifying behavior the way it was supposed to in the first place. It's causing problems. It's degrading the road. And I think people are likely to slow down more when they're facing the side of another car than they are for an island they can barely see.
Mr. Haven.
Yeah, I, I agree, as well as getting rid of the island, but I'm also contemplating making it entrance-only, and that's what my thought is. That may be a safer idea than having it go in and out, make it an entrance-only.
Mr. Berry.
Yeah, you read my mind, exactly. So I guess the question, I think everybody in general is okay with this idea of removing the island. The question is, you didn't come for that tonight, right? You don't have an engineering stamp saying, here's what we're going to do. So a conversation I think we need to have is how, how do we get the applicant to where we need him to be? Because we're imposing this on him. So is it fair for us to say, go and get an engineer to design this thing, or can we work it out with city staff?
We've gone a bit off course.
Exactly the point.
I, I cannot really indicate either way, whether or not I could have this put on city staff to do that or not. It would be something I would have to run through Director Mears and Director Babinski to ask the, yeah, as Counselor Witham's indicating, kind of a no. As for having the applicant come back with engineered things, I would say the applicant is seeking a waiver from the parking requirement. At this point, if he desires to come back for a site plan amendment that has, if you're looking for, if, to make that decision about the curbing island, if you need engineered plans and a stamped engineered, I think that you can inform the applicant of that and then make the decision on the parking waiver that he's asking, and let them know that if he desires to remove that curbing, he can come back with further plans for that. You could also ask for, if you want to keep the intent but don't want this curbing, could ask for signage that says, no left-hand turns? I don't know if there is existing signage that says that.
So I would be pleased to remove that, to be quite honest, but because of timing, it's a, that's a nightmare, causes accidents. Like, anyone who's been in and out knows that. I would love it if there was an ability to vote on this tonight. I don't want to be pushy, but they, we poured the floor today, we pulled a building permit, you know, not to be presumptuous that we're going to get the waiver, but some use has to go there.
I think, other than the initial ones regarding the island, could, would it be possible to have a condition in there if the applicant would like to remove the traffic island at High Street, which the planning board generally supports, that that could be handled as a minor field modification with city staff? Which doesn't require coming back here, it's, it's an administrative process.
And I've had a great experience with the city for years, all the way from Dave Sharples forward, so if, I'd be very happy to take the island out, particularly with Miracle Eer. Generally, people are a bit older, some really old, and they do get hung up there, and it, I think it does cause problems. I have no problem, it's very inexpensive to take it out. It's not an economic thing. It would make them all a better place. So I assure this board, I'd love to work with staff to get rid of it if, if there's a way mechanically or legally to do that.
Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Horton, and then Mr. Richardson.
So I think Mr. Witham got what I was going to say. We've got kind of three things here. There's the parking requests, which I think we're all in favor of, given the timing items. There's the island, which sounds like we can deal with through minor field modifications. And then there's the pothole, which we, I've noted is a DPW issue, and we want to poke them about. So in terms of what we've got here, I think we can only deal with the parking tonight, apart from an encouragement to come back and a positive response to getting rid of that island across the board.
Mr. Horton.
My comments as well. I'm in favor of the waiver for parking. Additionally, we have the lighting concerns, and perhaps, I think that's probably a great suggestion to handle it at the SRTC, and maybe note that this board is all in favor as well.
I, I think the lighting, the striping is relevant to the parking, so that can be a condition here.
Good, I like that, too, so I would be in favor of keeping that as a condition.
Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, I think, you know, Dave's hit it right on the head. Lighting, striping, and signage, I think, would help. Certainly, turning right is okay. I, I avoid that entrance either in or out. I come from Stackpole Road, I'm more than happy to enter the queue at the light, just for safety reasons, all the way around, but I can't imagine somebody turning, trying to turn left out of that where it curves to the right. And so then you kind of got to go zigzag your way out there, which is, huh? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I, I think the SRT level is certainly capable of coming up with a, with a solution. It's, it's not good as it is right now, so.
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments on the board? With that, is there a motion?
I'll take a stab, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Witham.
I move that the request of Brittany Lee on behalf of Somersworth Rail Station for a waiver from Section 12.4.5, Exhibit A of the Site Plan Regulations, to provide 38 parking spaces where 49.03 are required, be approved with the conditions that the parking lot lighting be repaired and be operational, that the existing pavement line striping be redone, and that the line, the lights for the pedestal sign either be repaired or removed.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. Mr. Horton.
Can we amend the, the motion to include removal of the island?
I'll make an amendment that the traffic island, removal of the traffic island is recommended by the board in that it be handled as a minor field modification with city staff.
I like that.
Re-stood by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Further discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Waiver granted.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for getting rid of the island. It was, I mean, I mean that sincerely, it was.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You as well.
This is Christmas in July.
Item E. Dylan Glover is seeking a conceptual review for a motor vehicle services use located at 40 Main Street in the Business B District, assesses map 11, Lot 204, Site Number 10, 2023. Plana Crossley, anything to add?
So this is a conceptual review, so it, there's no action required by the board, it's just a discussion with this potential applicant. They are looking to establish a motor vehicle repair garage station at 40 Main Street. This property is located in the special parking overlay, which does not require onsite parking. It is .19 acres, and the previous use was a professional service. It's also located in the Form-based Codes overlay, and as per Section 1932E3, uses, where uses are not specifically called out in the permitted use table, an applicant may submit a conditional use permit for the proposed use. So should the applicant come forward with that use, they would also need a conditional use permit. And, but this is an opportunity for the board to discuss the use with the applicant.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to make their presentation.
Perfect. Thank you, and good evening. My name is Brian Dano. I'm a commercial real estate agent with SVN, the Maciello Group. I represent the owner of the property, Let Realty Group. Let Realty Group reached, recently purchased the property in November of '22 from DeNew LLC. On February 5th of this year, I was hired to lease the property. We ran into a lot of interest, but had some trouble leasing it to, you know, general business uses that are called out in the use table. We met with business uses that are called out in the use table. We met with Dylan, who had expressed interest in using it for auto use. It is my understanding that it was used for, an auto use for many years, and that the previous use from the seller was a flooring-related business. While I was at the property earlier today, we located their previous use permit, which, though said flooring, I do have it here somewhere, was called out as an auto use. I will, I can pass that around. The, as you see in the staff report, 40 Main Street is located in the Form Based Codes overlay district. Motor vehicle repair garage stations are not listed as a permitted use, but per 1932E3, where not specifically called out in the permitted use table, we may submit a conditional use permit. So, that's, we're here to kind of, you know, see what you guys think of an auto use in this location. With that, I'll call up Dylan to talk about his business.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Glover. I live right here in Somersworth at 7 Emory Street, and I am the owner of Glover's Garage LLC. We are a mobile garage. We have one truck with tools and equipment to fix vehicles, and equipment small and large. We are looking to permanently settle into 40 Main Street and use that as our home base and repair facility for equipment we cannot service mobily. I have been a mechanic for approximately 13 years. I have worked most of my career for a Boston-based construction company, Barletta Engineering Corporation. There, I worked on road race cars, heavy equipment, rail equipment, generators, and small engines. I did one year of training at Mercedes-Benz of Boston, where I repaired and serviced Mercedes-Benz vehicles. I went to school at Universal Technical Institute, where I studied automotive and diesel technology. I also completed a six-month training at Mercedes-Benz Elite Advanced, where I learned just about every nook and cranny of Mercedes-Benz vehicles, engines, and drivetrains. My hope is to take my business to the next level, right here in Somersworth. I plan to use the building as a repair facility for automotive service and repair for equipment I am unable to service on the road. I will only park probably less than five vehicles maximum in the parking lot, and will not need to change the exterior of the building in any way. The building location in the community is the ideal location for this new endeavor, and I hope this committee can share this vision by approving the change of use for the property at 40 Main Street. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. As you know, the conditional use permit process is very lengthy and expensive for applicants. We received engineering quotes in excess of $25,000 to do full site plan approval. Essentially, we would like to see what we can waive from the engineering as needed, as we believe strict conformity would pose undue hardship and the specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land. In such site plan indicate, the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation. This property is completely paved. There are no areas for landscaping, no wetlands to delineate. Drainage will stay as is. The building is not moving, so no setbacks or changing. Traffic impact would be negligible. We believe that the city has adequate capacity for sewer and water for Glover's Garage specific use. Dylan would be installing lifts inside the garages, running his business at both 40 Main Street and Mobily. With that said, we'd like to take this time to discuss any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Questions on the board? Mr. Berry, then Mr. Richardson?
Yeah. So, what do you say site plan? What exactly are you proposing outside? Are you doing absolutely nothing and taking it as is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's pretty straightforward, then. Thank you.
So, yeah, I, here's the, here's the permit. So, here's the, the permit for the previous tenant. And then we did make booklets for you all that have pictures of the building as it stands today, as well as hand-sketched measurements. The building itself is only 1,200 square feet.
So, do you have any intention of doing any work outside? Like, do you foresee there being any, any fluid, any, anything that could ease, drain onto the ground? Because, remember, right behind, we have the canal. So, we don't want to discharge any pollutants into our water system.
No, there's gonna be no work going on outside. Never. Unless it's the jump started to get it in. That'd be the only thing.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
Yeah. Thank you for, you mentioned that you would probably have maybe five cars parked there. So, I guess my question is, are you looking to work on cars by, or vehicles by appointment, or drop in, or? The, the one thing I noticed in a number, and I call them "you gotta minute" cars. You know, people drive up, "You gotta minute? I need you to look at this, and can I leave it?" And people do. And then the next thing you know, you see cars all over the place. And that kind of bothers me, because, you know, it fills up a parking area very quickly when people do that. And so, if you're talking about five cars or so at a time, I'm more than happy with that. So, I don't know if you want to address the "gotta minute" cars.
Yeah, so my plan is to keep it by appointment, because where I do on-the-road stuff, I'll probably be doing my mobile thing three, three-plus days a week. I work with a lot of construction companies right now, so I, I would probably mainly be on the road and just use that as like a, you know, keep tools that I can't keep on my truck and things of that nature. It's, it's more of like a regroup, refuel, you know, kind of situation. And I'd be working on things that would be tougher to do with just jacks and jacksteens. That would be nice with the lift. But, yeah, definitely no, nobody stopping in. Yeah, I don't like that either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, to probably kind of returns to his roots, it used to be Paul's Amoco Gas Station and Car Repair Facility back in the Stone Age. So, you're actually reviving a previous use. Any other questions on the board? Mr. Rhodes?
So, you mentioned in your statement that you, you're qualified on heavy equipment as well, heavy diesel, construction equipment, rail, rail cars, things like that. Is your intent on this site to keep work that occurs here to small automotive, or are you looking to do heavy equipment here as well?
Just small automotive. Yeah, nothing, yeah, there won't be any excavators or dump trucks.
I was just concerned about the, that road being particularly across from the library, the impact of heavy equipment on the, the pavement, on the fact that you've got the canal right there. If this is automotive only, I think you're using this for what it's meant to be.
Mr. Horton?
I'll say just say congratulations, Mr. Glover, on, you know, your business and all, your hard work to get here. I, for one, kind of have a different view on it. I think, you know, our downtown's changing, changing for the better. A lot of good stuff going on, and, you know, there's a lot of new restaurants, or there are new restaurants. The police station just sold, and their plan is to have a small playground for kids there, with additional restaurant and some additional housing. So, I don't exactly, I don't see this really fitting, in my pers, my personal opinion, I don't really see it fitting with the, the vibe of the downtown right now. You know, I kind of just see it changing with the additional, with the pediatric dentist across the street, too. So, I'm not, I'm not real sold on the, on the car repair facility. You know, there's a lot of great spaces that this would, would do, serve you well. You know, 108 being one of them, you know, more of that commercial industrial area. So, that's just one board member's opinion, though, so I'm not, I'm not super sold on the car repair. But I wish you the best, though.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Haveman?
I like the idea, and congratulations on trying to accomplish this. But, concern I have is, when you're doing repairs, are you gonna be doing any type maintenance repair and hazmat removal and spillage and oil-water separators, if that may be needed for this project?
Yes, I take the environment very seriously. I know waste oil is, it's not pleasant to look at, no matter where it is. So, right now, I take my oil to the shop that I used to work at. They burn it, and then they take the used antifreeze, and they have a company remove it. And I would plan to do the same thing. Just keep bringing it there.
Are you gonna have a waste oil burner slash heating system inside the facility, or is it?
No, they do. They do at their facility. So, I'll just keep bringing my oil there. But I won't have anything, I'll probably have like a 55-gallon drum, keep it in there, and then we'll swap them.
Mr. Wytham?
Question for city staff first. So, not a permitted use, according to our regulations, but we can permit the use with a conditional use permit versus going to the zoning board and seeking relief there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Which is why we're having this conversation here.
Correct.
So, when it comes to the conditional use permit process, I think it requires us to be very thoughtful, not only of the applicant, who I think would do a tremendous job based upon your delivery of the information here tonight, but of what the overall desire of the downtown is, where this is located, as Mr. Horton spoke. And I'm not sure that automobile repair fits anymore. Now, that being said, it was a former repair facility. If you look at the picture, it looks like an automobile repair facility. Can we hide an automobile repair facility in plain sight, right? And I think a lot of that depends. And what does it depend on? What does the property ultimately look like? I can just share with you that prior tenants of this property were the bane of existence of our code enforcement officer with various compliance issues, because we don't want visible dumpsters. We don't want cars up on jackstands. We don't want, again, we get what the building looks like, but we don't want it to look like, quite frankly, there are some automobile repair facilities in this community that don't look too good, right? There are junk cars. There's leaf springs outside. There's barrels of this, that, and the other thing. It's not particularly well-kept. So, I'm not saying I would support this, but if I were to support this, you're gonna have to have a lot in the application that speaks to limiting onsite parking, delineating the parking, talk about dumpsters. Again, there's no landscaping right now. It's a, it's a canvas of hot top and concrete, but could we put some planters or something? Could we, that's gonna help me to get there, because I'm not there just yet, because I don't think it fits. But it could. I know that's not terribly helpful, but that's where I'm at.
It's helpful.
I have one comment. I guess my point is, you already have a car repair facility next door, so it kind of fits in that area. That's my comment. Mr. Rhodes?
So, I think Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Wytham bring up some good concerns here, and it is part of a downtown that we're looking to revitalize. It is one that has had some motion in that direction lately in particular. I do want to raise the point here that this has been, in the past, a car repair facility, and at one point, it sounds like a gas station although that predates my time in Somersworth. It was recently used for a flooring. I thought it was a bath refitting company at one point, too. Either way, that kind of semi-industrial sort of usage here. The points that Mr. Wytham raises is about dressing this up and making it fit better with revitalizing downtown do make sense to me, and I think they're ones that we should consider when this comes in. I do just want to caution the board against letting the perfect be the enemy of the good here as well. If we're looking to have this be something other than an auto repair facility, we'd be talking, or something similar to that, that semi-industrial use, we'd be talking about asking the landowners to basically demolish this building in the hopes that something less industrial could be built on the site. I would much rather have an auto repair facility that puts some effort into its appearance than a vacant building, in the hope that it could be some sort of boutique commercial at some point in the undefined future. So, that middle point of let this be an auto shop, but put in some planters, keep your lot clean, present a good face to the town, and the passersby, I think would be a good use for this site.
Any other comments on the board? I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Rhodes said, and you pretty much summarize my thoughts.
Yeah, no further comments? Yeah, thank you. I think, to be frank, we'd be very amenable to making it look nice. You know, the current owner bought the property to store a vehicle. Their needs have changed, so, you know, they're trying to, again, take it from, you know, basically a vacant building to something that is more in line with, you know, the vision of the long-term here of the downtown of Somersworth. So, I appreciate your candor today. Thank you.
And all other questions? You also have our comments?
I think, I think that's good. We're gonna talk to the engineers and try to put together a CUP for you guys.
I look forward to seeing you back.
Perfect. Can I get the use permit back?
Thank you.
I didn't take a photocopy of it. No, no, package's yours.
This here?
Yeah.
Lana Crossley, is there any new business that may come before the board?
No other new business.
Item five, workshop business, solar ordinance discussion. Lana Crossley, the floor is yours.
So, Director Mears did indicate that if you prefer to wait for her to return, you can continue this to the August meeting. Just to let you know, we did share this with the Conservation Commission on her request. They did provide some comments. If Jeremy does want to, I can review them, or if you want to review them, summarize them?
I'm happy to. You've had to do a lot of talking tonight, so happy to talk, if that's okay. So, on conservation, a lot of our concerns here were around what could you do with a CUP under these guidelines? Because right now, it's said that you can't put solar panels into wetland buffers, whether you're dealing with the vegetated or woodland. A lot of our questions came up around, would you be allowed to with a CUP, or is this a hard and fast, no exceptions rule? We had some concerns around drainage from these, because it does alter the manner in which water comes off. You put a big solar panel in place, particularly one of the ground mow ones, it just hits an angle, you've got constant flow onto a point. So, we wanted to note that this would be a largely impervious use. You're channeling runoff with this. We also had a concern about, on the city-owned land component, whether that could involve clearance of forests that are in place on city-owned property for a temporary lease. So, wanted to have that looked at by the planning board, and potentially, I believe council has to speak to this, too. So, we're concerned about the possibility of clearance of existing vegetated and heavily vegetated land for the installation of solar farms. There's also been a couple of applicants lately that have said that they believe that solar panels were a non-permanent installation. And we took issue with that, particularly in cases where you had to pour concrete in order to put in trackers, footings, footings for trackers, rather, or for more permanent installations on site. These are long-term installations, and wanted to make sure that they were treated as such in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Wytham?
I was not at the last meeting, but I did watch the rerun, and liked the conversation, and I think, overall, I like where this is headed. I think we need to wrap our arms around it sooner rather than later before it overruns us. I see here a highlighted section that talks about an accessory use within the rear or side setback in residential. Can we talk about what accessory use is? Can, can someone help me with that?
I would assume that it would mean it's not the primary use in the residential district. So, it's accessory to your primary use, which is your residential structure. You're not running a utility power, the solar plant.
Understood.
That would be my interpretation of that.
Got it. Got it. As one planning board member, I think I would be fine with not allowing freestanding solar in residential areas. Rooftop, have at it. Freestanding, I think, doesn't work in a residential setting. If the planning board sees other than that, I think it needs to be in the rear setback, not on a side setback. I think my particular concern right out of the gate is residential. And then whether to allow it or not. And then secondly, where we do allow it in the city, I think we do need to consider it a structure. And I think it needs to be within setbacks and certainly should not be allowed in a front setback at any point in time. Whether it's a tracker or freestanding panels, like have been recently installed behind the Dunkin' Donuts on Route 108. I think backyard or side yard is where those belong. They certainly don't belong in the front yard. And with regard to the trackers, I'm concerned about height. I know we have a height ordinance here in the city, so I think we need to be mindful of what that is. And when I think about the structure of a tracker, it's measuring from the corners of the big square that rotates down. It's not the pedestal that it sits on. So think of it as a large cube, if you will. So those are the things that I would want to make sure that we contemplate within the ordinance. I like many of the other things in terms of, you know, data plates and emergency response and all of those things. I think those make sense in here. But I'm particularly concerned about, I like solar, I get the need for solar. It makes a lot of sense, but we need to be mindful of what it does to our neighbors.
Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Berry.
Yeah, these are the kind of issues that were talked about at our annual meeting. And the kind of, the point of that meeting was that solar is here to stay. And we need to come up with some kinds of rules and regulations to make them applicable to our city. The issue of front yard, backyard, all of that, you know, the circumference of a tracker and not just the base of the tracker. And if I recall, we had a proposal for solar some time ago where we said that, you know, the, whatever you call it, the panel couldn't go into the neighbor's property. And, you know, that kind of thing we have to be mindful of. To address the rooftop versus the yard, you know, the kinds of things that came up with, well, you know, maybe my roof doesn't face in the right direction for solar, so why am I being discriminated against if I could have one in my yard? Well, what part of the yard? Is it visible to the neighbors? Is it visible? You know, those are the kinds of things that people have suggested, not wanting to be discriminatory against somebody who might want to benefit from solar power, but just doesn't, you know, their rooftop, like my own, doesn't face in the right direction. So it's the kind of thing that having regulations helps in that process and certainly is with anything else. People can request a waiver if there are, you know, circumstances that they feel might benefit themselves. But it's getting it done, getting the rules and regulations in place. They're here to stay and we're going to be dealing with it.
Thank you. Mr. Berry?
Okay, so I agree completely with Mr. Richardson. You know, the reality is that we do have to be very careful with our verbiage that we do put into our regulations. You know, to his point, you know, yeah, maybe there's somebody out there that says, you know what, my roof doesn't face the right direction. And it may not be financially practical, but tracker, you know, somebody might see benefit in having a tracking system, even though it would cost a fortune to do. But there could be that one person that may test us on this. Now, to counter Counselor Witherman here, you know, we also need to be careful when we say front yard. Now, in general, I would agree 100%, never in the front yard. But there could be the opportunity, somebody might have 10 acres here in town. You know, they could, they might have a road that goes back half a mile into their property. So what does front yard actually mean, right? What's the city's stance for setbacks, right? If you have foliage, right? So there, we might have to be very careful with how we verb, list out our verbiage in our regs to represent those particular situations where maybe if you want to get a tracker, you have to come before us anyway. So regardless, that's it. Roof mount, fine, deal with it local, but if you're going to put in a structure, planning board.
Good discussion, good scenarios to consider. Mr. Rhodes?
So similar comments here regarding rooftop versus ground mount. There's conditions under which rooftop can't work. One is the direction of your roof. Another one that can show up is tree cover. If you've got substantial shading over your roofline, which is good from a heating perspective, it can often create a situation where rooftops just impractical on a site. You don't generally have to make it worthwhile. Particularly when we're dealing with people who are larger landholders. I think ground mount can make a lot of sense for them, particularly if they've got that kind of a scenario where they've got trees around their home and then an open field behind it, or in front of it even. So I'd agree with Mr. Berry that I think when we're looking at wording here for residential accessory usage, we may want to structure it around screening from road view and neighbor view as opposed to lot placement. That way we can address the potential uses of the property without impinging on the quality of the sightlines on it. The other piece around accessory, Ms. Witherman was completely right. These are secondary uses on the property. We've got two called out in here, one's residential, one's agricultural. It's just where your primary use on the property isn't solar power generation. I also want to note that we do need to get this done sooner rather than later. We crossed a tipping point probably about a year or two ago with solar, where even when you take into account the subsidization of fossil production that government undertakes in this country, solar's cheaper than that in New England. This is only going to accelerate. So if we can get a well-crafted ordinance in place, that, or zoning ordinance in place that allows it to be placed as heavily as possible while still maintaining the quality of the community, it's going to serve our community well to have that in there for both commercial and residential users.
Can we find some examples from municipalities that are already much further down the road, I would imagine, than we are?
Yeah, so I know Michelle pulled this from a couple of other old communities. I know she mentioned Durham, or you mentioned Durham. I forget which of you did. Couple others that were looked at as well.
It was. Give me a second to give you the previous staff report. If Chris has a comment?
Yeah, so I'll just, just a quick one. So I'm just going to piggyback on the, yes, that one.
Discussion.
The screening portion. So thinking about Dunkin' Donuts, you know, they did a, they planted some extra trees and stuff there, but I think we could have gone further to increase some screening there. I think it's a little bit of an eyesore. I mean, it's in a good location, so I mean, I'm glad it's not next to, I'm glad I'm not living next to it. But I think if we're, if we focus on heavy screening in a residential area, I think that would be key.
Mr. Witherman?
Yeah, I think all good comments and all things for us to consider. Now, remember that our current regulations call out what is defined as a front yard, right? So those things are already defined. And sometimes a zoning board is challenged with like corner lots because they have two front yards, right? So zoning board is a place where if you need relief for some quirky thing like the corner lot is where you go. So I like the mechanics that we already have in place. I think the discussion we ought to have is should we allow them by right? Or should it be you need to seek relief if you want to put it there, right? Example, you can't put a shed in your front yard. You could seek relief if that was the only place that you could put a shed on your property. So I think that's a mechanism we already have in place and might consider it. I do like what has been mentioned about screening. If we are to allow it in residential areas beyond rooftop, it must be screened, which says to me pretty quickly that the idea of a solar tracker is going to be hard to screen. So maybe it's a ground-mounted type of thing. So screening might be the way to go versus an outright, don't allow it. If someone has enough land, and I challenge you to find that within our small 10 square miles here, where you could put it behind some very large vegetated buffer that no one's going to see it, have at it, right? So I like the idea of screening. I think that might make sense in a residential area. I think it's tough to do in a commercial area, possible maybe, but throw those out.
Yeah, I agree with the screening, but we could, I think we should also define what type of screening, height, width to cover or hide the panels.
To that end, you know, in our site plan regulations, if a developer has rooftop HVAC units, they can't be visible from certain sightlines. So maybe to keep our language consistent, I think it's at like a six-foot elevation from the edge of road type of thing. So maybe.
Also about parking lots that are adjacent to public right of ways, it talks about screening for those to be a certain opacity.
So again, I think we already have some language that we might as well stay consistent with. So I hear you.
Any further discussion? So Horton?
So in your, we didn't touch on it yet, but in your packet or on the desk tonight, there was a survey for housing. And I'll just add that I saw.
So with the workshop?
Yeah, yeah, with the workshop. Oh, were you going to get to that?
It's outside of the solar ordinance. If anyone has, we did, for a follow-up, we did take from Barrington, Dover, Durham, and Rochester, and the state model for solar. I didn't know if you guys had any other further solar comments that you wanted to loop in. But otherwise, we can incorporate things that you guys have mentioned and bring, Michelle will discuss it with you again in August, if that works for the board. And then we did provide a memo that Chris will address, it sounds like.
Sorry about that. I thought we were good. So, so yeah, so saw some statistics.
Communications miscellaneous?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in 2014, the medium home, the medium rental price for an apartment here in the city, in the state, was around 1150. It's now up to 2,000 for a medium apartment rental. And with a vacancy rate of 0.6%. So it's pretty challenging out there, you know, if you're looking for a place to rent. Thankfully, I'm not. But, you know, we had some pretty big projects before us in the last couple few months. So I mean, we see it here, you know, there's always butters that come out to voice their concerns with it. But I think, you know, just as a board and as a community, we need to focus and maintain that, you know, housing is critical to the community, to the region and all of that. So initially, what I was getting at was on the city website, there is a survey you can go do and complete. And we're working with Mark and I, I work with the Stratford Regional Planning Commission on, as well as the planning department, to update the housing chapter of the master plan. Anything to add, Dana?
No, that was great. So hopefully everyone has taken the survey. If they haven't, please do tell your friends. Counselor Witherman, it looks like you haven't. Also, we are going to have a housing forum in September on the 14th. It's a Thursday at the Black Box Theater. We hope everyone can attend. People, general public, we're looking for, we're looking for having conversation about housing. And it's an opportunity to have more intercourse, discussion with people about housing. So please take the survey.
Now, any of these housing advocates, are they getting towns like North Hampton, Hampton Falls, Rye? I think it's the five towns they said have the most restrictive.
A lot, yeah.
Where it always seems to be like, put on Summersworth, Dover, Rochester, as far as gee, you're doing enough for housing with these towns, you know?
A lot of communities are looking at housing. And we participated in the Spring Housing Academy, which had a lot of different communities. I don't recall about those specific ones, but a lot of them are looking at how to address housing in their communities to provide it reasonably for what they are able to provide.
Like it's a town in Newcastle looking for ways to vary their housing opportunities.
I don't know.
Guess that's my question.
They have some large parts, structures, I think.
Mr. Witherman?
You know, it's all an interesting conversation. And I will do the survey and pending availability, we'll go to the session as well. These are important conversations, you know, and some of it was ginned up at the last city council meeting with the Chinburg Development Proposal for the Armory. And, you know, one of the questions that was asked, and I think it's an interesting question, is why is there a need for all of these apartments? And if you look at Summersworth's population today versus 10 years ago versus 50 years ago, pretty stable. If you were to chart it over the course of 100 years, Summersworth's population is pretty flat, right? Yeah, it's had ebbs and flows, but it's pretty flat. So why is there a need for all of this housing? And I think the simple answer, it's sort of my simple answer, is that the housing unit today is different than it was even 10 years ago. Heck, when I was in high school back in the early 1980s, I went to school with many kids that were from families of six, seven, eight, 10, right? The family unit today is one, maybe two kids, if there's kids. Many are one person, two people. So it's the same number of people, but it's a bunch of, it's more blocks that you have to find homes for. So it's the, the number may be the same, but the way it is divided is radically different today, which means you need more housing units. And with such a lack of housing, it's a supply-demand issue, right? You can get those high rents when you have, what, less than 1% vacancy, right? Oh, I guess I can ask what I want. That's how it works, right? It's not complicated in it, in the way that the number is arrived at. But solving it is.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, the survey addresses that kind of an issue. And, you know, I think we've seen with our census figures from 2020 and our school population down considerably, just exactly what you're saying. Our housing needs have changed from families to individuals or couples, seniors who are no longer living with their families, that kind of thing. So the, the survey certainly gives people the opportunity to say what their needs are, but what they would like to see, what they think the needs, what they personally think the needs of housing are in the city, whether it's family housing, whether it's the workforce housing, however we define that, whether it's moderate income, however we find that, or low-income housing. You know, whatever people feel the need is, or market rate housing, you know, whatever the people feel that they think Summersworth needs, the survey gives you that opportunity. And I would recommend that people fill it out. It doesn't take long. The, the plan is to go, you know, to have a community forum at the Black Box on Thursday, right? Yeah. I knew it was coming up, but I've been really busy lately and hadn't looked at my calendar. So thank you for that.
Our meeting, Mark, you mean?
Hmm?
You mean our meeting?
Yes.
That's Friday. This will be on a Thursday for a public forum.
The one in the Black Box. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah. So that's an opportunity for people to come in and get their opinions known as well. So it's a good thing to discuss, you know, what other communities are doing, whatever their regional planning commissions are doing, that's up to them. But this is something that Summersworth has chosen to do, and it's a good thing for everybody.
Any other comments? Again, I'd like to welcome Mr. Haberman to the board. Hopefully he had an informative night.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Witherman, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.